Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the May 16, 2011 meeting of the Danbury Planning Commission. We'll open by calling the role of Mr. Calore's absent to your eyes.
Here.
Mr. Sermonera?
Here.
Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
All right, the law is here. Mr. Ferguson, will you sit in for this? Mr. Calore, yes, thank you. Uh, commission members, hopefully you received the minutes of the February 15th meeting. Uh, if you haven't had a chance to review them, to review them, I'll add a petition to motion to accept.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the meeting minutes of our February 15th meeting. Any comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, minutes are accepted. Um, for the record, our next regularly scheduled meeting is June 6th, 2012, and um, we will move right to our first public hearing this evening. 7:30 PM, Joseph J. and Paul F. Stacco, application for special exception for outdoor storage of construction equipment, Decker Family Rental, in the CG20 zone, 108 Federal Road, L-09024, special exception, 725. Ms. Hostetler, review the legal options.
Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission of the City of Danbury will hold a public hearing commencing at 7:30 PM on May 16th, 2012, in the City Council chambers of City Hall, 155 Deer Hill Avenue, to consider the following matter. Joseph J. and Paul F. Stacco, applications for special exception to allow outdoor storage of construction equipment, Decker Family Rental, in the CG20 zone, at 108 Federal Road, which is lot number L-09024, SE number 725. Parties in interest and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard at this time at 7:00 PM, on the E. Brown, John and Chairman, published, thank you, and inter.
Thank you very much, Helen.
Sorry.
Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? Any favors?
Yeah, it's working. Doesn't seem like it's on. Hang on. Look at the wheel. Doesn't seem like it's on. Right, huh? I don't think so.
Yeah, it's working, isn't it? The door's fine.
Is that on? That is not.
Go ahead, Jen.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Paul J. Brer, Attorney and Law in Danbury, and I represent the applicant and owner of the property.
There, we'll just have a sit. How about I turn the wheel?
Uh, the, the owners of the property are Joseph and Paul Stacco, and the applicant, the proposed user of this property is Michael Decker, uh, so he does business as Decker Family Rental in this proposed location. The property is located at 108 Federal Road, it's in the CG20 zone, and it contains a slightly over a half acre of land. The prior use of this property was Action Motors, it's sort of diagonally across the street from Harley-Davidson, next to the old Bennigan's Restaurant, it was like, days in there now, I think, back in this odd business in this facility. Uh, the, the former owners, or the former, current owners, but the former occupants, uh, moved up the road to 90 Federal Road and took this property for lease, and Mr. Decker's family wished to rent it as a rental, rental facility. More precisely, the rental facility will be for tools and small equipment, uh, pretty under four and a half tons, which are generally mini excavators, uh, brush chippers, uh, bobcats, air compressors, things of that nature, no, no large equipment, as you see at night around the area. And the recent maps, which we submitted, show a small area behind the building, approximately 35 square feet, which is screened, which would be the location of an outdoor storage for this, this small equipment. Uh, the Deckers have been doing this business for the past 30 years, they have two other facilities in Westchester County, and wished to open this facility in Danbury. The revised map, which was submitted yesterday, identifies and identifies the three or four issues that were raised by the planning department, uh, and it's, it's all stated on the map. It has a detail of the, of the screen in the corner, it has notes limiting the equipment tonnage to four, 4.5 tons, and indication there's no outdoor display areas are proposed, no outdoor storage will take place outside the fence storage area, and the use of the parking spaces, uh, for, for storage equipment is prohibited, so there's no parking, no storage and parking spaces in the front yard. So this is, this is a rental facility, uh, for small tools primarily, and for a few, a few small, smaller kinds of construction equipment, all within the protected, view-restricted area, as shown on the map. It's not a contractor yard of any sort, nor will, nor will be any large equipment in the site. The building itself is relatively small building, integration, so it's, it's not a big operation. Mr. Decker is here, if you have any questions with him, otherwise, if you have any answering questions, you may.
Questions, Attorney Jaber, commission members, if you have any.
Um, and just to follow up on some similar operations we've had, how, uh, that there's, when the storage of the equipment, that would be in the outdoor area, which would be a larger piece, they would be stored in a retracted state. Have a situation too around town where, you know, they're five stories high, so people see them, you know, coming from the lawn.
Right. If, if, if this kind of equipment goes that high, it'd have to be below the screen there, retracted, aren't below the screen.
Anything else, commission members, for Attorney Jaber this time?
You're saying, you're saying all the equipment is going to store in the rear of the building?
The outdoor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You see, it's right here on the map. Behind, essentially, behind the wall. Here's the building. Yep, I'm sorry. It's 30 by 1, it's 30.
One of the comments, what is the property owner, they're by that any outdoor display areas are proposed, I'll say if any outdoor display areas are proposed, I just hope that you said, sounds like not, but.
Yeah, it's on the map, you would want us to show it on the map, but no, no outdoor display area is on the map.
Anything else for Attorney Jaber, commission members? Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone in favor, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Pretty good.
Good evening, uh, my name is David Rogans, I'm an attorney with Office 158 Deer Hill Avenue, I represent, um, Munial Properties LLC, which is the neighbor directly to the south, it used to be, uh, the Bennigan's Restaurant, it's now vacant, but my clients are seeking, obviously, uh, whoever, uh, obviously, they're seeking to put another restaurant in that location, and, they contacted me about this, uh, fairly recently when they received the notice, the notice is a little bit, um, well, created some concern on their part, because they certainly would have objected to, uh, vehemently, to a contractor yard, it appears that what the, uh, applicants are doing is going to be storage of some, uh, construction equipment outside, uh, and I guess my, uh, position is not necessarily in opposition, but it's, to register some concern about, uh, how that storage area will be used, uh, our concern would be that, again, it's kind of addressing the provisions of, uh, 10C4A, which are additional requirements with regard to a special exception, that the use will not emit noise, smoke, glare, odor, vibration, or other conditions which would create nuisance, or having a detrimental effect on adjacent property. And their concern would be, of course, if, uh, construct, larger construction equipment would be allowed to idle and, and, and run in that area behind the restaurant, uh, behind the, uh, rental facility, and obviously, next to the restaurant. Uh, I don't know what their plan would be with regard to that, but I, I think we would, um, like to see some kind of a, uh, restriction with regard to allowing, uh, equipment, I know a large, four and a half ton piece of equipment is, it sounds like a little larger than a car, but, something in that area, but we would be, uh, looking for some kind of a limitation on, uh, the use of the facility, uh, so that, uh, that type of equipment would not be allowed to idle and cause the noise or vibration that could be of a concern to the restaurant owner.
Thank you, Attorney.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone else in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this application? General?
Mr. Chairman, this was, uh, only reviewed by the Department of Planning and zoning. The comments that I had in my letter dated May 9th have been addressed, I looked at the map that was submitted today, not yesterday, submitted today, and they've included all of, of the comments that I had requested. So the department is satisfied with, that the plans comply with zoning regulations.
Mr. Chairman, okay. Go ahead, Jen.
This little scorpion that they have, that doesn't trigger a, uh, you know, a traffic, uh, trigger or anything else, not gonna, you know, trigger a 500.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Jen.
No, it does not.
Um, all right, I mean, we can close this publicly, all right? I mean, we're not waiting for any reports from any other city departments, unless there's anything else, commission members?
Mr. Chairman, do you need more of your, your clarification, some of these ambushes of hours, and, you know, the, 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 you need to do?
Um, you're, you're welcome to ask that question now, uh, we can address it to Attorney Jaber, if you want the opposite themselves to address it, why don't we start with the hours of operation and go right through, drill down a little bit on the, uh, types of equipment, and just make sure he stays his name, and, and ask a few more specific questions.
Please give a voice. My name is Michael Decker, uh, my sons are here as well, they operate the business for me. We operate, uh, Monday through Saturday, 6:30 in the morning through 5:30 in the evening, we have for 29 years. Uh, idling, uh, the equipment shed does not run in our yard, we don't like to waste fuel, we put it on a truck and get it out, so we don't want to have it sitting there, so for the whole part, it will not be idling for any period of time. Vibrations are not something that we generate a lot of vibrations, a lot of banging and jackhammering stuff, no, we don't actually do contract work, people put the equipment out someplace else to do that work.
Give us an idea of some types of equipment, and like, the, the opposition said four and a half tons, that doesn't mean a lot, just give us some ideas.
A compact excavator, which we usually do with bobcats running around, we have a bobcat that's going to have there, we're going to have a little one and a half ton black top roller, uh, air compressors, compactors, blade compactors, uh, jackhammers, electric jackhammers, air jackhammers, things of that nature, uh, we've got no party equipment, we don't get involved, the party, they don't get involved, the medical, basically, small tool and equipment, two bases is homeowners and land contractors, we do not, have not solicited the business from big road heavy construction equipment, that's not our business.
And those gigantic cranes we see, that doesn't happen, that's not a part of your business, and, um, was anything else?
The visual sight line from nowhere behind that fence to the restaurant, we walk and greet, what were the restaurant, um?
The area between the property and the restaurant is to be screened with, what, six feet fence, I believe it's a six foot fence with the, uh, slats in the fence itself, that will be the screen, will, a backhoe, uh, cab stand, 106 feet gas, will be a foot or two above that, up the door, the bulk of the machine, the dirt machine will be below.
All right, so somebody sitting in the restaurant wouldn't see that, any side view of that?
When is most of the equipment rented? What time of day, they come in the morning?
In the morning, then.
An hour before they close?
No, in the morning, yeah.
And then return it, and what?
The following morning, wasn't that even?
So.
It would be, we would be closed and tightened up by the time the restaurant happened, it's a busy peak area, 7 o'clock.
Thank you.
Shouldn't be closed for, for, they had a bar, they had a bar.
Yes, yes.
So it's, 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 uh, off hours, apparently, from the, the restaurant business.
But it sounds like it's efficient screening, which is less.
The screening is part of the resolution, I should, the specifics regarding screening are in there.
Where we operate currently, we're in a very residential area, multiple kitchens we have currently, we've had no public, our town, the area we operate in.
You can see the detail, it shows it as a non-usual security.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Um, was anything more specific, commission members, if you want? If not, I'll add a petition to close.
Motion closed.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? If you have time to clarify mine, so all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, public hearing is closed, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, we will move straight ahead to, uh.
Mr. Chairman, can you move that to possible discussion?
Uh, motion to, uh, add to, uh, old business for discussion.
Motion made and seconded to move the matter of Joseph and Paul Stacco to item 5 on our old business agenda, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, this item will appear, will be moved to item 5 under our old business agenda. Um, we'll move ahead to the old business for consideration and possible action portion of our agenda, item 1, Sawmill Road Corporation LLC, application for special exception to allow use of limo air controls, who are generating over 500 vehicle trips per day in the IL-40 zone, Turner Road, A17001, special exception 724. Commission members, hopefully you did receive a copy of a revised draft resolution to staff, I believe that went out earlier today, and I, I assume that everyone received it, had a chance to take a look at it. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I can't do a vote on this.
Okay, uh, let the record show that, uh, Helen cannot vote on this particular matter, the eligibles are Michael, myself, Joel, and Chris, okay, we have, we have appropriate amount of eligibility, if you would love it. Ms. Emman, do you?
Mr. Chairman, good evening. I asked if I had a chance to pass the resolutions, you don't have a copy? Okay. Um, as directed by the commission at closing the public hearing, uh, last week, last Monday, uh, I've prepared and provided you with the draft resolution of approval for your consideration. The resolution was emailed to the commission late yesterday morning, and a subsequent revision with minor changes, uh, was emailed late this morning. I hope you've all had an opportunity to review the resolution, I'm here to go through this with you, and if needed, I can go back to the file and the maps to answer any questions that you may have. Um, before we get into, uh, the resolution, I just want to mention, um, just a quick housekeeping, uh, what you have before you is a petition for grant special exception, the applicant is also seeking a concurrent site kind approval or a site kind approval with modifications. Uh, as discussed in the resolution, the proposed use, manufacturing of electrical equipment, is a permitted use in the zone, however, the use itself generates fairly 500 vehicle trips per day, and as such requires the commission to grant, to grant some approval for, uh, special exception. In addition to determining compliance with the regulations, the commission is also required to make specific findings, which is fact, is section 10C4 of the regulations. So with that, I can go through the, I can go through this and go through the whereas's, or you can ask questions, it's, it's up to you.
Well, the whereas's are pretty straightforward stuff, I don't think you have to go through all those, and then, maybe start on page 2, now it would therefore be resolved, um, well, how do you want to do it, you want to field questions, or do you want to review this matter?
Well, actually, if I can before the minor revisions, just to go through, uh, very quickly, um, what I had done, we had some, a couple typos here and there, we changed the warning, that is, um, the changes are, the deletions are, have a strike through, and the new language has an underline, so I can go through that, it's pretty self-explanatory, there's really no substance to it, it's mainly grammatical, so I just wanted the commission to be aware of those changes.
Go ahead, Jen.
I, you know, personally, I don't have a need to go through all the whereas's, it's a pretty straightforward application, and it's, it's similar operation, if that's all you can approve there. Um, and I did have some questions, uh, the last time I met, but I did go through the, the, the detailed plans and the traffic study, and those, those were resolved, and I have done it, so, maybe if this, if there are any questions, I'll, I'll.
Just want to, Jen, at page 3, just confirm the, um, the requirement, the, uh, the applicant shall widen the turning radii on the northwest corner of Sawmill Road, Turner Road, to accommodate large trucks and construction, as necessary, and develop the site as approved, then down below where it says, um, speaks to the issue of traffic control, controls, that would, that is more, uh, uh, you know, I'm talking about a light, we're talking about a person, a police officer or a flagman from the construction site, who will be there while the construction is going on, overseeing the flow of traffic, is that what the intent was there?
That's correct, provide additional precautions at that intersection until such time the, uh, radia is fully widened, it just provides, uh, just additional, and again, this is up to the Department of Public Works, uh, the Director of Public Works, to make that determination on the need for some type of traffic control, um, again, it, it's, it's at the discretion of Public Works to determine that based off, on safety and what's going on at that intersection with respect to construction vehicles.
Go ahead, Jen.
Regardless of the need during construction, no CO would be, uh, issued until that modification of intersection has been done, is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Jen, I mean, he's Joe, he can.
Thank you. Uh, it wouldn't be a CO, it'd be, uh, prior to certificate of zoning compliance, we don't control the occupancy, we, well, I say we, the zoning enforcement officer, controls certificate of zoning compliance.
Stand corrected.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions for, uh, for Jennifer, commission members? Um, I just want to go, you know, obviously, I want to make sure we take a look at, uh, what was mentioned earlier, I think, uh, Attorney Rogan's mentioned, section 10C4A, uh, the additional requirements for, um, granted, a special exception, um, there's the big four that we, that we sort of defined here on the planning, um, will not emit noise, smoke, glare, odor, vibration, or other conditions which would create a nuisance having a detrimental effect on adjacent properties. Um, I, I don't think there's anything in the record regarding any sort of noise, smoke, odor, uh, the only, the only thing I, I see there is glare, and I, I believe the applicant addressed that, um, with the type of lighting they're putting in the pile, I can't recall the type of lighting.
It's, it's downward.
Mr. Sermonera?
Yeah, full cutoff movement air.
What's that?
It's the fixture, uh, a lot of the new codes are dark sky compliant, which means no light goes up, and I, light doesn't go out, it comes down, therefore, there's, there's a little glare, no glare, to the, to the, to the eye out front.
Thank you for that, Mr. Sermonera. Um, designed in a manner compatible with the character of the neighborhood, I mean, as, as Jennifer mentioned, this is, uh, this use is permitted in an IL-40 zone, and, uh, essentially, it's, it's the, uh, the same footprint, a bigger building, but essentially the same footprint, uh, of, uh, of what is there now, and, and I think the applicant demonstrated their, their desire to, uh, to use as many of the existing roads and driveways and parking areas as possible, uh, with a minimum, uh, attempt to minimize the upset to the unused portions of the sites, the portions that are currently not built on, and, um, uh, you know, there was an additional, I recall, additional buffering, some landscape buffering on the southwest side of the, of the, of the site, and, um, I don't know, anyone else must have kind of known that, but, um.
Well, they were, they were, they were gonna leave everything that was standing still there, I mean, I was real crushed, everybody was gonna add to, to the natural.
Correct.
Um, with regard to the traffic, uh, testimony, the applicant did submit a, a traffic report, um, which was, which was credible, um, it was, it was reviewed by our traffic engineer, and, um, and accepted by our traffic engineer. Um, you know, they, they are going to improve the turning radii at Turner and Sawmill, where I was very happy to see that, and, uh, put traffic controls at the intersection to, uh, make sure the wireless is home, and, uh, traffic safety is, uh, is maintained, they also, I think the applicant volunteered to fix the sidewalk, and that's in the, uh, resolution too, they, they, the applicant volunteered to fix, yeah, it's in the resolution.
I was looking for it, and I think it's in, but it's, it's in Richfield, I don't know that we, who can.
Well, it's, it's the, the fact that the applicant made their representation is in the resolution. And then, um, you know, in terms of number four, harmful to the natural environment, or jeopardizing public health, I mean, I, I believe the applicant submitted testimony that they, uh, that they did do a natural diversity study, you know, there was no known habitats on the site, the, uh, this application did receive EIC approval, of course, our engineers approved the stormwater drainage system, so, so I mean, is, if you look at 10C4, and you look at the information in the record, I mean, that's pretty much my observations, I don't know if anyone wants to add anything to it.
Maybe just to say, it's, it's, you know, it's a fairly straightforward application, it's, uh, it's an authorized, uh, activity in the, uh, the zone, very similar in nature after probably, from manufacturing standpoint, a little less listened to, seeing what was there and approved before, before the, the vacated promises. It's kind of up on the hill, so.
Absolutely.
I don't have any particular issues with that.
Any further discussion, commission members? Go ahead, Jen.
There's one quick correction, um, I need to make, uh, on page four, the engineering department letter, we received this at about 5 o'clock today, the engineering department worked diligently on it today to get us, um, that quite a final staff report, there are still some, some issues that need to be resolved regarding the design of the water and sewer that comes at a later date once they submit the water and sewer permits, uh, the details of the final, uh, the drainage system design with respect to, um, inverts and elevations of the catch basins, those details need to be clarified and verified for them, and, um, other than that, they, uh, were pretty much okay with, uh, the utilities and the, uh, the drainage system, so I need to revise number seven, say, May 16th, 2012.
Fair enough. You see, the word was excellent.
Any other questions?
Any other comments, commission members? If not, I'll add a petition to motion. Go ahead.
Do you want to go through and read, uh, some of the other, the further resolves, just so, not the whereas's, but.
Sure.
Just, and not the conditions, just the further, um, not the first one on page, well, the first one on page 3, which talks about the approval, then the conditions, which you can outline, 1 through 17, and then, the final 3.
You want to read the whole thing in?
No, I don't think you need to read the whole thing in, but just certainly, um, talk about the.
Number 3?
No, the first be a further resolve at the City of Danbury Planning Commission after review of said application, that section, and then, the last 3 be a further resolve so the commission has it on the record, if you can.
I'm not, I'm not sure if I understand. You're, page 3, I'm on it, yeah.
First one.
Okay.
Well, here's.
Yeah, mine. Okay, what, what, what about it, though? What, what about it, do you want me to, what, what, what do you kind of call my attention to?
Can you just read, just read it into the, just read it out loud, that's all.
Be a further resolved at the City of Danbury Planning Commission after review of said application materials, receipt of staff comments, and consideration of all information incorporated into the. information incorporated into the record, hereby approves with conditions, said conditions for a grant of special exception of application to site plan approval, SC-724, tax assessor lot number A17001, and be it further resolved, the conditions of said applications are the follows. One, the project shall be developed in accordance with MAPS plans and documents as listed in exhibit A, except as may be revised pursuant to modifications required herein. Two, the applicant shall comply with all requirements of permit 924 issued by the City of Danbury Environmental Impact Commission. Three, the applicant shall widen the turning radii on the northwest corner of Sawmill Road and Turner Road to accommodate large trucks and construction equipment necessary to develop the site as approved. The applicant shall prepare design plans for said radii widening and submit said plans to the Department of Planning and Zoning for Transmittal to the Department of Public Works or through approval. All required city permits and approvals shall be obtained prior to any work in the public roadway at this intersection. The City of Danbury Director of Public Works shall make a determination on the need for traffic control at the intersection of Sawmill Road and Turner Road based on the type of construction and volume of construction activity. If so required, such controls shall remain in place until such time as the intersection radius is fully widened and the intersection improvement is completed in accordance with the design approved by the city, or alternatively, improved to a level of completion wherein such traffic control is no longer warranted as determined by the City of Danbury in sole discretion to ensure public safety on the public roadway. All approved construction improvements in the public right of way on said intersection shall be complete prior to issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance, also sees condition thirteen. Want to just keep going?
No, you don't have to.
Okay.
It's just noting the conditions, two through seventeen, actually, two through fourteen, and then fifteen, sixteen, seventeen have to do with the grant of special exception. One second, please. If you can go through the last three, be it further resolved?
At the bottom, page five?
Yes, please.
Be it further resolved that the applicant voluntarily agrees to repair the portion of the by-two-minute walkway located on the southern portion of Turner Road within the town of Ridgefield, and shall coordinate all such repair work with the town of Ridgefield, and be it further resolved, the applicant voluntarily agrees to repair the portion of the by-two-minute walkway located within the right-of-way on the southern portion of Turner Road, and shall obtain all necessary permits and approvals for work as determined necessary within said right-of-way from the City of Danbury Department of Public Works. Want me to read the last one?
Yes, please.
Be it further resolved that the Planning Commission acknowledges that the plans and drawings and record provide for a new structure fifty-three feet in height or eight feet above the forty-five foot height limit, the height limit in the IL-40 zoning district, and that an application for a variance is under consideration by the Zoning Board of Appeals, ZBA. As noted in condition number five above, all plans must comply with the City of Danbury zoning regulations or a variance issued thereto by the ZBA. If the variance is not issued or the building is redesigned with commensurate site plan provisions, the Planning Commission requires that the detailed architectural renderings, a facade elevations, and any associated plans be modified to comply with the zoning regulations and resubmitted to the Planning Commission for a review and finding as to compliance with section 10C4A2 and a duly noticed public hearing prior to the issuance of any permits. Are we clear on that?
Just for my own identification, that if we had to open up another public hearing, it would be only for that specific issue.
Correct. 10C4A. Which do you, who do I, who do you agree with? Well, I didn't mean Holton, I had posted.
Thank you.
Anything else, commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. E. Rice?
Motion to approve the application for a special exception for BLMO as per the draft resolution dated and revised May 16.
Motion made for approval, go ahead, your second?
Second.
Second. I'll take a voice vote. Again, a yes is for approval, and a no is for not approving. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The draft resolution for approval is approved. We'll move right to item two, under our old business for consideration of possible actions. Simpott Properties Inc., application for floodplain permit in York Field Sports Arena, Shelter Rock Road, L15001, special exception, seven, nine. Ms. Teninger, help, some other members? I want to make sure everyone receives the E-mail, the, the report on this from staff.
Simpott, can you please table?
Oh, I'm sorry, we've got, we've got it on the grid, we've got it on DRX, DXR.
That's correct.
I'll entertain a motion to table item two. Motion made and seconded to table item two, Simpott Properties, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Item two is tabled. We'll move to item three, ERX Aviation Center Associates, application for floodplain permit, DXR Aviation Center, Walden Turn Road, G18017, G18018, special exception, seven, eighteen. And on this one, we did get a draft floodplain permit from staff in May 15, 2012. Jennifer, want to speak to that?
Mr. Chairman, has everyone had a chance to review the draft? Okay. I will go through it very quickly. We just approved this, I can't say just, a few months ago, beginning of December. We are waiting for the engineering department to sign off on the drainage and utilities, which we have received. The, the property, if you recall, is up against the airport, as I'm sure most of you know, is located in a floodplain. It's in an unnumbered A zone with an established base flood elevation of 454.5. It's not a known elevation, it's what's established by the Army Corps and by DEP. We've been using it for at least ten years, if not longer. The applicant is proposing to fill approximately fifty-eight cubic yards because of the construction of the garage addition. As you recall, they were tearing down and rebuilding with an addition, storage of the, of the airplanes. The onsite grading that's proposed requires approximately eighty-four square feet of soil removal, which, cubic yards of removal, let's take, I should say cubic yards, which results in an overall increase in flood storage of twenty-six cubic yards, which is what we aim for, equal compensation or providing us with a little bit more storage. The garage addition will be constructed at the existing grade, which is approximately 452. And what they have to do, the regulations allow for it to be constructed at grade provided that they've designed it to automatically equalize hydrostatic flood forces on the exterior walls. They're technical. What we're going to do is condition that requirement because it's really based off building permits when they come in. So they'll be required to comply with section 7A7A4, which I've noted on here, I will not go through. It's all about having openings, allowing the water to free-flow. And given that this is a maintenance facility, there is no living area, we're not especially concerned about flooding living quarters, getting people out safely. It's a maintenance shop, there's nothing but airplanes in there.
Well, it's, the only risk is, is to equipment, not to light.
Human life, that's exactly it. So, farther down in the approval, the commission has determined that the provisions of section 7A5C have been met, and furthermore, the criteria line in 7A6 and 7A7 have been complied with. Standard conditions apply, you might have to send an elevation certificate. Number three, provide written verification from either the engineer or the design architect that the proposed garage addition has been constructed in accordance with 7A7A4. The applicant's engineer has certified writing to the department that the proposed site was constructed pursuant to the approved plans, and then, any modification to the plans requires a revised floodplain permit. And I can pull the plans out if you need to see them.
Thank you, Jennifer. Questions for Jennifer on the matter of DXR aviation, commission members? Here we go, I'll let you give a motion.
Motion for approval of permit for DXR as per the draft resolution dated May 15.
Motion made and seconded, there one typo is all the way up the correct, there were square foot, the cubic yards, and further, okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the floodplain permit draft dated May 15, 2012. Commission members, any further discussion? All in favor of approval, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The draft floodplain permit for DXR aviation approved. We have one other floodplain permit on our agenda. Ridgewood Country Club Inc., application for floodplain permit, 119135 Franklin Street Extension, G13029, special exception, 722. Jennifer?
Mr. Chairman, you have a floodplain permit for the Ridgewood Country Club. This one was recently approved, February 1st, oh, I'm sorry, no, March 21st, we did the approval. The request came in February 1st. If you recall, they were doing some additions to the country club itself. The actual floodplain is in a very small corner of the site down the other Hansa Brook. They're in a numbered A zone with the base flood elevation of 438.
Is this that area back in the corner of the parking lot?
It's down by the bridge, by the tennis courts.
Yeah, the bridge, okay.
Yeah. I can pull them out.
No, I was trying to recall.
Yeah, the Brook, it skirts it, there's only a very small portion, and they're not proposing to build any structures there. There are no cogs, there's no fills within the limits of the floodplain. The only thing they're doing is replacing a stormpipe that's on the edge of the floodplain. Again, it's still on the cusp. We felt the prudence to have it come in for the actual floodplain permit in case they needed to do work in the floodplain. The engineering department has reviewed and approved the plans with respect to grading and drainage. The provisions of 7A5C have been met, and the criteria line in 7A7 has been met. The additional conditions I set forth, the applicant shall certify and writing that the site was constructed pursuant to the plans, and then, any changes requires a revised floodplain permit. No elevations in particular because they're not proposing any building construction within the floodplain.
I'm a member of this particular club, but similar to previous application, I seem to need to refuse myself, because this matter is in no way connected to any membership I have in this class, and I just don't suppose that. Any other questions for Jennifer on this particular floodplain permit, commission members? Anything else? Here we go, I'll let you give a motion.
I will make a motion to approve this section.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Here we go, I'll try your minds, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The floodplain permit for Ridgewood Country Club is approved. We are going to move to item five on our old business for consideration of possible action agenda. Joseph J. and Paul F. Ostako, application for special exception to allow outdoor storage of construction equipment, Decker Family Rental, IL-20 zone 108 Federal Road, L1, L0904, special exception number 705. At this point, I'd give Jennifer some guidance on your thoughts and how it appears close, commission members, anyone in the company?
The draft in the version of the small traffic standards will be sure the keys that see there in there for the screening of all the things, and any like instructions that are appropriate.
How does it change?
Yeah, anything else? Mike, any comments on this particular matter? Mr. Senator, you know federal road, you're talking.
Yep.
Any, any fears that this is...
I don't think it fits, I mean, there's a, there's a major league rental center on the other end of town, on the other end of the street, so I think, you know, it's no problem, especially with, with the idea, they're only keeping the equipment in the rear, and you can't make any meter, so that's, that's it.
Thank you. How does that sound, Jennifer?
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. We have a referral here also. Thanks, Jennifer, have a good evening.
Thank you.
There's an A3 referral, petition of Tarrant A yellow, Nine Whitlock Street, I-15234, change of zone RA8R3. Zoning commission has a public hearing scheduled for this one on May 22, 2012. Now, unlike a lot of our referrals, this one seems a little bit, I wouldn't usually say a two-page, a two-page report on referrals, but this one is a little bit, along with a history to it. Jen, do you want to, which one of you guys is taking?
Uh, who's listening?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you have, you have a memo dated May 15 from Dennis Eltern. Has everyone had a chance to review? Does anyone have any questions before I go into it?
No, proceed.
Okay. The petition to amend the zoning map for Nine Whitlock is from an RA8 to an R3 zone. The lot is approximately thirteen thousand square feet. Under the R3 zoning, it appears the lot would only be sufficient to meet either a one, two, or three family dwelling, and certainly would be insufficient for any other use that may be allowed in the R3 zone. The, the reason for the petition is somewhat long-winded. Do you want me to read through it, or?
You're on that line.
Okay. The subject, this is in quotes, the subject property's current use is a non-performing two-family in the RA8 zone. The subject property is solely sandwiched between the RA8 Deer Hill overlay zone and R3 zone. It clearly does not belong in the Deer Hill overlay zone because according to the residential zoning regulations for A7B1, refers to that zone encompassing lots RA8 which have road frontage on Deer Hill Avenue. This leaves the bordering R3 zone, which is the zone that all other properties on the Black Street are in. Also included in the R3 zone are properties east of Deer Hill Avenue between Worcester and Sealing and west of Grand. In accordance with Regulation 9A and 10, it seems only fit to change the zone to R3 so it may conform. Dennis notes in his staff report that Nine Whitlock is zoned RA8 but is, is not located in the Deer Hill overlay zone. The parcel of us four lots zoned RA8 and only one lot zoned R3, pursuant to our zoning now. In a way, background, so that the commission understands this, the use of the site is a two-family dwelling and consequently may or may not be a non-conforming use. However, the owner attempted to convert the separate garage building into a residence, but was stopped in December 2010 when a court order found that such would be a violation of the regulations. A number of conditions were attached to the order to restore the garage to its previous use. We have noted that the requirement to replace or restore the garage doors has yet to be complied with. With respect to the plan of conservation and development, the map recommends that Nine Whitlock be used for single-family. Consequently, the request of rezoning is not in performance with the plan of conservation and development. In addition, the rezoning would conflict with the proposed policy recommendation in section two, which is our urban core district plan, in the conservation of development, which states rezone areas in urban core to be compatible with the plan of conservation and development. A rezoning to an R3 would do the opposite of that. With respect to the zone change criteria, we find that the request conflicts with the following criteria as outlined in section 10I3, general criteria. We do not find, excuse me, we do not find that all the uses allowed in the R3 are fully compatible with those of the RA8 zone or the abutted Deer Hill Ave overlay zone. Specific criteria, under specific criteria for mixed residential districts, the parcel is on a local street, Whitlock Street. The criteria suggests that the site be conveniently accessible to a collector or arterial street and highway. Other, sorry, other considerations, the, the lot currently contains a two-family dwelling, which is protected under non-performing use in the RA8 district. The non-performing use is one that may have performed to the regulations at one time, but now does not. However, the regulations cannot and do not require that the use be changed to conform to the current RA8 zoning regulations. It's then suggested that a rezoning of the lot to R3 would meet the intent of the provisions of the regulations to bring non-performing uses into performance. That is not the case, for it is not suggested that rezoning is secure for bringing non-performing use into compliance. If this parcel were a performing use under RA8 zoning, it would only have one dwelling unit. But as a non-performing use, it's allowed to continue as a two-family dwelling, that's what he's, that's what the property owner is entitled to. However, it appears the owner wants more than two units. If it is the intention to resume previous efforts to convert the separate garage into a dwelling unit, that effort would fail even if the rezoning was granted. The R3 district does not allow two residential buildings on one, on a lot. Specifically states that only one two-family or one three-family dwelling is permitted per lot. Consequently, the rezoning, if granted, could only allow for the conversion of the existing two-family dwelling into a three-family dwelling. The separate garage could not be converted into a dwelling to gain an additional unit. Dennis goes... Dennis goes on, excuse me, to say that there are other issues that relate to lot width and setback. The lot width for a three-family in an R3 is 100 feet. He's only got approximately 7.1 feet, so he's deficient in that. In addition, the required side yard setback is 15 feet. One of the existing side, side yards is only 11.9 feet. Consequently, in either case, does the lot comply for construction or conversion to a three-family in the R3. In conclusion, the rezoning request raises several issues. One, it does not comply with the plan. Two, R3 zoning to allow for third dwelling unit is not compatible with the abutted building lots that are zoned RA8. And the existing lot size fails to meet the minimum required for all other R3 uses except dwellings. The parcel is not located on a collector or arterial, and the lot fails to meet the required minimum lot frontage on a minimum, sorry, minimum lot frontage or minimum side yard setback for a three-family in the R3. The department recommends, do I have this petition for the reasons stated above? We note closely that the use of the garage as a separate dwelling unit, if contemplated, is not permitted in the R3. Very long-winded, but all valid points.
Mr. E. Rice?
This is not the first applications we've seen of zoning changes under the guise of, I have a non-compliant use, let's change the rules so I comply, as opposed to, I think, the intent of the plan of conservation and all of the, its modified uses to comply with, you know, the overall planning of the city. I, I think changing a zone in order to make a non-conforming use conforming to a different zone is not justification at all for making a zone change. I mean, there was some, you know, greater good to the city or something, but it's, it's been not in non-compliance for how many years? And I, I don't see any compelling reason to change it, but most certainly it's not a compelling reason to make, to change a zone in order really to just make the use of the property compliant with the existing regulations. I, if I might be so bold, I'm going to make a motion to deny the application.
Well, a negative recommendation.
Well, make a net, yes, I agree, that's true. We're not the ones granting it. Make a net is for a request for zone change.
I, motion made for a negative referral, a negative recommendation for this referral. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it because it sounds like the change does not have any benefit in fact, which creates another type of law enforcement.
Thanks, Al, I hear you kind of speak, I just, Mr. E. Rice, anyone else want to weigh in on this? Our planning director feels pretty strongly about it, enough to write two, two pages single-spaced, you don't see any of those. Anyone else want to weigh in on this? Well, a motion has been made for a negative recommendation for this referral and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of a negative recommendation, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? This better, we're going to, this zoning commission rather, to receive a negative recommendation on this matter. Anything else, Jen?
I don't believe so.
Commission members?
Welcome to the...
Motion adjourned, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, opposed.